All right, good evening to you all. Thank you for coming out and welcome to the Monday, January 28th, 2019 meeting of the Falls Church City Council. I'm delighted you're all with us this evening. I'd like to welcome you here and call this meeting to order. If you could, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, Madam Clerk, will you call roll, please?
Yes, sir. Ms. Conley.
Here.
Mr. Duncan.
Here.
Ms. Hardy.
Here.
Mr. Littenhouse.
Here.
Mr. Snyder is arriving late. I think he's on travel. Mr. Z.
Here.
And Mayor Tarter.
Here.
Thank you, Council.
All right, thank you very much. And do we have a motion regarding the meeting agenda?
Mr. Vera moved to adopt the meeting agenda.
And do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it. So we have several proclamations and special presentations this evening. We're going to start with a memorial resolution honoring Dale Dover, a predecessor of mine and ours, and Mary Beth Conley is going to do the honors. Vice Mayor?
This is a memorial resolution honoring Dale Warren Dover. Whereas passing of Dale Warren Dover on January 14th, 2019, the community lost a valuable and accomplished citizen as well as a scholar, athlete, diplomat.
Father, grandfather, and friend. And whereas Mr. Dover was the first African American to serve as mayor of the city of Falls Church, and whereas Mr. Dover served as mayor from 1990 to 1992, and as a member of city council from 1990 to 1994. And whereas Mr. Dover was a star basketball player for the Harvard Crimson, played and coached professional basketball in Portugal, and was a standout participant in the Sunday morning basketball game at the Ed Henderson Gymnasium for over 15 years. And whereas Mr. Dover was a distinguished linguist who was fluent in Mandarin, Portuguese, Danish, Hebrew, Swahili, and Arabic. And whereas Mr. Dover joined the U.S. Department of State in the 1970s and utilized both his language and basketball skills to serve his country as U.S. Vice Consul in Denmark and coach for the Danish National Basketball Team, and later as U.S. Consul in Tel Aviv. And whereas Mr. Dover had a passion for serving young people, and demonstrated this not only by his work with youth basketball, but by focusing his law firm on advocating for children in the courts. And whereas Mr. Dover's legacy lies in his service to his country and community, and his contributions to the city of Falls Church are greatly appreciated.
All right, now be it resolved that the City Council of the city of Falls Church, Virginia recognizes with great admiration and appreciation the contributions of Dale Warren Dover over the course of his life and career, and offers sincere condolences to the family. I don't know if there's anyone from the family here tonight. If not, we'll make sure this makes its way to them. But thank you, Mr. Dover, for all your contributions. So...
And Mayor Tarter, I would just note that there is a celebration of life that's scheduled for this Friday in Alexandria, and I plan to attend. There may be others from the city council that plan to attend, and we'd like to take that proclamation and present that to the family at the time.
That'd be quite nice. Thank you. All right, our next proclamation is declaring February 2019 as African American History Month in the city of Falls Church, and Ms. Hardy will do the honors.
Great, thank you. Whereas the city of Falls Church wishes to honor the contributions of African Americans to our city and to our nation, and recommit to reaching for a day when no person is judged by anything but the content of their character. And whereas observance of African American History Month allows us to reflect on the sacrifices and contributions made by generations of African Americans. And whereas in 1915, the first rural branch of the NAACP was established on what is now the Tanner Hill Historic Site. And whereas the city of Falls Church takes great pride in the Tanner Hill Arch honoring Dr. Edwin B. Henderson, Mr. Joseph Tanner, and all of the men and women of Tanner Hill who were instrumental in the formation of the first rural branch of the NAACP. And whereas the Tanner Hill Heritage Foundation was founded in 1997 to preserve the early civil rights history of Falls Church, to honor local civil rights heroes and further the ideals for which they stood. And whereas the city of Falls Church continues to work closely with the Tanner Hill Foundation. And whereas the Third Annual March for Unity, Racial Healing, and Justice was held in the city of Falls Church on Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day, January 21st, 2019, followed by a community discussion at the Falls Church Episcopal. And whereas the city of Falls Church wishes to continue our march towards a day when every person knows the unalienable rights to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness.
Now therefore, I, David Tarter, Mayor of the city of Falls Church, Virginia, do hereby proclaim February 2019 as African American History Month in the city of Falls Church, and call on all of our citizens to observe this month with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to the next item, which is if I were the if I were Vice Mayor contest. And I'm glad... Now, we're going to... Unfortunately, it's if I were mayor. That's the contest this year, and I guess it is in past years as well. But the Virginia Municipal League has, in past years, sponsored a contest that a number of our students, I believe, will participate in. I think we've got a few of them here today. And so if you are here and you're going to participate in the if I were mayor contest, if you'd like to come forward, maybe get a foretaste and maybe whoop your head for you if you're going to win the contest, or maybe later in life as well. But if you're here for the contest, you might want to step forward. I can read all the names. I'm sure I'm going to get a few of them wrong, but I'm going to try anyway. And if I get your name wrong, please correct me. But the first one is Amari Kapoor, Luke Russell, Anya Grunwald, Tommy Davies, Noah Theis Keppner, Vivian Nguyen, Sierra Murphy, Deshipka Ravi, Rosa Sims, Katie Anderson, Fiona Shear, and Ethan Hawn. All right, why don't you guys come forward and you give us... We can give you our good looks.
And Mr. Buck, the teacher's back there, too.
And also, we have Mr. Buck. I don't know if you're going to be in the contest this year, or just want to join your students, but come on forward as well, and then we'll get a good photo of everybody. But why don't you guys come forward? If you have anything to say, you're welcome to tell us now. We'll wait till your contest entries come in. But why don't you come around and we'll get your congratulations, or our good looks to you, and maybe a good photo. So why don't you come on around here to the front?
(inaudible)
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 I don't know if anyone wants to say what's in their letter, but we all had an opportunity to read your letters, and they are all online, I think, as part of the meeting packet, so if anyone else wants to read them. But I was really impressed that a lot of the things that all of you selected as what needs to be done in the city are things that matter to members of city council as well. Global warming, and sidewalks, and parking, and so many other things. So I appreciate you putting that thought into it, and if any of you would like to talk about it, you're welcome to do so. And I thank Mr. Buck for encouraging everyone to enter, as well as Ms. Eichner.
Last year, the... Oh, you guys want to come on forward? Yeah, go ahead. Why don't you come up to the microphone, each of you?
(inaudible)
Wow, that's loud. I'll stand back. Oh, okay, so when I entered mine, mine was about traffic safety, I believe. But I just liked how the contest was really open to how you could express your ideas to your city, and express your knowledge of how it works. And I also liked how it inspires people to, like kids like us, to really look into our problems as a city and try and fix them.
Fantastic, thank you so much. All right, who's next? Is that you, Ethan?
Yes.
All right.
Oh, wow, that's loud. Testing. Okay, we're good?
Yeah, we're good.
All right, hello, my name is Ethan Hawn, H-A-W-N. I just wanted to say I am very proud to be your candidate, and yeah, mainly my issues are on the prices of education, and taxes, and stuff. And that's pretty much it. Thank you.
That's all right, that's plenty. That'll keep us busy for ages, I think. All right, what you got? You're Kate, right?
Yes.
Okay, Kate, what you got?
Hello, is this...
Yeah.
Thank you very much for giving us a chance to write about this, and for recognizing our letters today. In mine, I just really highlighted the importance of keeping Falls Church City environmentally friendly. And even though Falls Church City is small, I thought it could be kind of a role model city for other cities around us, and maybe spark like a statewide or nationwide effort to lean more towards being more environmentally friendly. Some of the ways I just suggested to be more environmentally friendly were informing everyone, and just showing them that their actions make a difference, and to help encourage the use of low emission vehicles, or hybrid vehicles, and to encourage recycling in ways so that people will stop filling up their landfills as much. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Well, this is a... I think it's going to be a tough decision. When the time comes, we've got some very smart and enlightened students here in our community, and I want to invite you at any time to come to city council. You don't have to wait till this context... Contest comes around each year. But you, like any other citizen in Falls Church, has a right to come any Monday and speak your mind, and tell us what you think. And we're particularly interested in hearing what young people have to say. You've got a different perspective than many of us do, and you've got a lot of great ideas. So I want to thank you that you turned up tonight, that you entered the contest, and continue that civic engagement. There are also student reps to boards and commissions when you get a few years older. So, for example, the ESC, the environmental... You know, there's a lot of different groups and bodies that you can get into and start participating actively. You know, pretty doggone soon. So thanks again for turning out, and good luck to you all. All right. Yes, oh, Ms. Hardy, did you have something?
You said what I said.
Okay, sorry. Mr. Littenhouse.
So I just want to thank you guys. Typically, we'll talk on national politics, but just in light of recent events and a bit of the circus going on downtown, I would encourage you guys to remain involved. And I think now, more than ever, is a time for young folks who have an interest in solving some of the problems that we have at a state and local level, and on a federal level, to continue to remain involved, because if good, smart, well-meaning folks don't take the opportunity to try to change some things, bad things can happen. So I applaud you guys for getting involved, taking an interest in what we're doing, and as the mayor said, don't hesitate to stand up, raise your hand, make your voice be heard. So thank you guys for your participation.
All right, and you're welcome to stick around as well, and see how the rest of the evening goes. Unless there's anything else at this point, let's move on to oaths of office. Are there any oaths of office to administer, Madam Clerk?
I don't believe so. Thank you.
All right, we're now going to move on to the receipt of public comment. That's the time I was just describing. We're going to start with a summary of written comments, Madam Clerk?
Yes, we received two letters. Robert McCann wrote about environmental and energy issues, and Rohini Winters wrote about enacting parking restrictions on Grove Avenue and the area surrounding Founder's Row.
All right, so now we're going to move on to the receipt of public comments. I was referring to that just a minute ago. And at this point, anyone who would like to speak is welcome to. We'd ask that you keep your comments to three minutes, that you fill out a speaker slip, and when you get up front, state your name and address for the record. At the present time, we have two speakers. You're welcome to speak now, or you can wait till the matter you're interested in comes up, and you could speak at that time if you would like as well. But I'm going to call the two names. If anyone else would like to come forward, you're welcome to do so. Kate and Quinn Morrison. All right, followed by Allison Brown, and that's the last speaker we have. Welcome.
Hi, good evening. Kate Morrison, 122 West Cameron Road, and this is Quinn. She'll be a future constituent. We just wanted to briefly just thank you again, Councilwoman Bertardi, and Conley, and everyone who's worked on this weapons ordinance, the revisions and the changes, and to the city attorney for the chart, to make it understandable to those of us who are not law school graduates. Thank you. And just, we just really appreciate your work, given in light of all the stuff going on in Richmond right now, and we're going to continue to go down there in a couple weeks to make sure that we do what we can on gun safety prevention and safety across the state line. And as...
Talk.
Yes, you can talk. Say thank you.
Thank you.
And so we just wanted to say thank you, as residents of the city of Falls Church, that you're going to do everything you can within your power to make our city more safe. So thanks again.
I want to make the noise.
We'll say thank you one more time.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, good work. You're welcome. You're welcome. All right, our next and last current speaker, at least, is Allison Brown. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Allison Brown. I'm at 706 Poplar Drive. I've been a resident of the city of Falls Church for over 13 years now. I'm here to support the amendments to the weapons ordinance. Thank you for all your work on it across the board, and we really need to do everything we can, and understanding the limits that state law imposes on us, really support this effort to regulate at least the transportation of loaded rifles and shotguns. So really encourage you to pass these amendments and keep up the good work. Thanks.
All right, thank you very much. And unless there are any other speakers, we are going to move on now to the report of the city manager, Mr. Shields.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. Just a few things to report on briefly. The Founder's Row project, as anybody can see, is underway with the demolition process. We do know that this is disruptive for the neighborhood. We're working in all the ways we did to try to plan for this construction to mitigate that to the best extent possible. But we do recognize that it is destructive, you know, disruptive for the neighborhood. Parking regulations for Park Avenue and Grove Avenue have been finalized, and the signs are being manufactured right now. Typically, we would wait till post-construction or post-development to do a parking survey and put in regulations. But in this case, I think the city and the city council's direction was to be proactive. And so these regulations will go into effect for the construction period, and it will also be helpful just to regulate the construction workers and their parking, because the contractor's responsibility is to make sure that they take care of construction worker parking, and that does not spill out on the streets. There will be a meeting with the neighborhood and the Mill Creek team to talk about the construction plan, the schedule, the phases of the project. That is being scheduled right now, and we're pushing the Mill Creek team to get that scheduled. And so stay tuned for that. That will be for the immediate neighborhood. And then lastly, Mill Creek has put out a date of March 4th at 4:00 p.m. Again, March 4th at 4:00 p.m. on the site for a groundbreaking, but we'll work through the details on that. The sidewalk on North Virginia Street, or on Park Avenue, near North Virginia Street, we had promised that in the month of January. Obviously, that is not going to happen. Our contractor has been slower than we thought. So we will follow up with them, get a new date, and then get the word out to the neighborhood on that. But our intention is to get that project done as quickly as we can to improve the walkability along Park Avenue. City Hall, just a quick update. We're working with Hit Construction on the City Hall project. We're looking for late February for the initial move-ins, but the move-ins will be phased, and so we will still have staff at 400 North Washington in March. We worked hard to avoid that, but it's pretty clear from the construction progress that that will be the case. But we're hoping to have at least a partial move-in in the month of February, and then all of city staff back in City Hall by the end of March. And we're working very hard with the Hit Construction team to make that happen. That's just a couple of things I wanted to mention tonight, and be happy to answer any questions.
All right, any questions, Ms. Hardy?
Wyatt, could you comment on the difference between the parking regs for Founder's Row between Park Avenue and Grove? We got a few citizen comments about that.
We did. And this is really, and particularly with the Park Avenue neighbors, we've been in a discussion with them for about three years, or perhaps longer, on parking concerns that they've had. People may have noticed that the St. James Church has been, I think, very proactive in trying to work with the neighbor. They put out these big sandwich board signs every day during services, exhorting their congregants not to park on Park Avenue. After multiple meetings with the church and the community, we have agreed to do a residential parking only 24 hours a day on the north side of Park Avenue. That is not normal. That is an atypical regulation for the city, and it's not a precedent that we extend... Expect to extend in other parts of the city. Typically, what we would do where there's development is have two-hour parking, but then regulate it really to prevent people from parking, storing their cars overnight on the street, or parking, or employees parking there all day. But allowing two-hour parking allows residents to have normal use of their parking of the street, if they have friends, guests, workers coming in to do work at their house or visit. Also, there was a concern that people be able to access West End Park, for instance, which is something that the CACT noted, and the Wreck and Parks Advisory Board noted with these regulations. So we have done the much more typical two-hour parking regulations for Grove Avenue, except overnight, where it would be resident-only parking to prevent people from storing their car on Grove Avenue if you happen to be a resident at the Founder's Row when it opens up. So those are... It's a quick summary of what is proposed and has been worked out with the neighbors on those streets.
So I know the concern is that Grove has asked to actually have the same 24-hour restriction, given that that's pretty atypical. Has staff responded to them on what the...
Yes, Mr. Stoddard responded to discuss the process and the rationale behind that.
Vice Mayor?
Mr. Shields, I have a question about sump pumps. Last week, when it was still cold and there was a lot of ice on sidewalks, there was a message that went out on social media telling people that it's their responsibility to clean the sidewalks. And I know we're supposed to... There's some kind of storm and possible iciness that's coming tomorrow.
There is. So...
My concern, though, is not just on icy days, but it just seems like there are a lot of sump pumps and discharges that are popping up all over the city. And several people noted that in response to the social media post. What's the right... What are the regulations there, and how do we make sure that doesn't happen? There's one on my street that just comes shooting out of the grass, and it's awful.
Right. So the regulations are that they have to be, and I don't remember the exact number of feet, but they have to be X number of feet away from any property line. And we, as a general rule, do not allow sump pumps to discharge directly to the gutter pan, nor do we allow sump pumps to discharge where they will flow out over a sidewalk. So that's for new construction. For new construction, there have been some rare exceptions to that rule on substandard lots, where the lot is... Where the discharge will clearly and very predictably impact neighboring properties. And so in very rare instances, we have allowed an underground pipe to go to the gutter pan and discharge there in the gutter pan. So what you see on the street is typically older sump pumps, or possibly sump pumps that weren't put in with a permit at all. And given how wet it's been, sump pumps are all everywhere working overtime. So when we have a quick freeze, like we had last week, and which we will have again on Tuesday night, and Wednesday, and Thursday, where it will be five degrees at night, maybe a high in the 20s, we're going to have this problem again. So we really need everybody to think about their sidewalk in front of their house. If they see the ice, put salt out on it. We will have an eye out for it. We have spots in the city where we know it's usually a really big problem, and we will go out and try to salt, or try to treat it in some fashion. It's definitely a problem, and it's one that doesn't have an immediate solution.
And what is the consequence if you put in your own sump pump? Does the zoning administrator... Is that... Who's in charge of that?
So that's the building official. It's a building code requirement. There are some contractors that will just do it, and we don't find out about it, and we try to catch up with those after the fact. And then it was something that the city, I think, didn't regulate, and state code didn't require permits for until a date sometime in the somewhat recent history. So a lot of the older houses have sump pumps, and there was no permit for those, and that was legal at that time.
So thank you for... Can you put out some more publicity this week? Thanks.
All right, anything else? All right, let's...
Two notes.
Sure.
Two quick notes of thanks. One, thank you to Mr. Manager, the staff, the city attorney, for removing the abandoned media boxes, which were littering our downtown sidewalks. If anybody wants to reclaim them, I understand they're at the property yard, but it looks very nice that they're now gone. And second, just want to thank the Assistant City Manager, Ms. Mester, for shepherding us around Richmond and the General Assembly on Thursday, where we did the usual, you know, dawn-to-dark effort to communicate the city's needs and wants to our General Assembly members and staff. We missed having Ms. Mester with us last year, because she was so busy with other things. We're glad to have her with us this year. Ms. Hardy, Vice Mayor Conley, and I had some good conversations with a number of people, and hopefully did the city some good. Thank you.
All right, anything else? If not, let's move to business on the agenda, Madam Clerk. Did you call the first item?
Yes, sir. We have a second reading and public hearing for TO 18-12, Ordinance to amend Chapter 28, Weapons, Article 7 of the Code of the City of Falls Church, to regulate the transportation of loaded rifles and shotguns, and repeal outdated provisions.
All right, Mr. Shields?
I will briefly go over this, and if Chief Gavin wants to add input, she certainly can.
The purpose of these amendments was first to add a prohibition on carrying loaded shotguns or rifles through the city. In the process of reviewing the ordinance, we found a large number of outdated provisions, and so there are a number of provisions being stricken from the ordinance. However, it's not as much a removal of provisions as simply removing things that are replaced by state code. And somebody already mentioned the chart, but we prepared a chart which appears on, beginning at line 38 of the staff report. What that chart tells you is for the provisions that are being removed, it tells you what the state code provisions are that prohibit the same activity. So effectively, the... This activity is not... We're not going to stop prohibiting it. We simply enforce the state laws now. And so we did a review to make sure that we're not really losing the ability to enforce much of... Against much of this conduct. And that's what that chart will tell you. But we have utilized this new authority. We've preserved provisions on pneumatic guns and other provisions in the ordinance. We also revised and updated the provisions on the destruction or sale of unclaimed firearms. And in the process, we removed... And in the process, we removed, we did not enact the provisions that allow public sale of those weapons. It's not something that the, our law enforcement, our police department would do, that is, sell the unclaimed weapons to members of the public. And so we simply took that out of the ordinance. And I know someone mentioned they appreciated having the chart, and I have to say, we had lots of citizen input as we walked, worked through this ordinance revisions, and it's been very helpful because they've really caused a couple of these things to be updated correctly and done well. So this is the same as you had for first reading, and if you have any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them. And Chief Gavin can give input if she likes.
Good evening, Council. I'm glad to be back in front of you tonight, especially for this ordinance. One, it's just, again, a measure of control that we have, particularly when we're dealing with weapons out on the street. We do deal with weapons out on the street. In the past month, we've had something similar that happened in Houston today where five officers were shot. It was a situation where they're arresting somebody with, dealing with drugs, and oftentimes when someone has drugs, they have weapons. And five officers shot, were shot about three hours ago, and then two officers were shot yesterday in Denver. But it's not all about officers because we know in the district this past week, we had three killed out on the street in front of a residential home. So first and foremost, I'd like to thank Carol and her staff for creating this ordinance and city council for supporting it, and particularly Letty Hardy for being the tip of the spear. I couldn't do this without the community support, and particularly the moms that email me, hopefully, you know, whenever they have a concern, but definitely when they have something that they know that I need to know, when it has to do with any type of the ordinances or the particular threats in this community. The ordinance is a small measure that lends safety to particularly the officers on the street, and we talked about that the last time I stood before you. It enhances our ability to talk to somebody when we see a weapon that may be in someone's vehicle and have that conversation. And in that small nuance, it gives us an opportunity to look, separate the person from the weapon, and actually have a time period in which we can render it safe. So you actually made it much safer for the officers. I look forward to stand before you again with more ordinances that are clearly for common sense gun laws in the future, and I believe it's coming, and particularly with the community's support that we have here. And I look forward to being before you when we do that. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for your efforts as well. Before we get into council discussion, I'm going to open it up to the public. I know a few of you have already spoken, but anyone else who would like to speak is certainly welcome as well. Seeing none, the matter is closed to the public and with council now. Are there any council comments, questions? Ms. Hardy?
So I'll just echo everything that Police Chief said really eloquently already, but a shout-out to the seventh graders, because when I read some of the essays, several of you wrote about gun violence prevention and safety. So I know this is just a reality for kids these days, which is just unfortunate. But I ask that you pay attention to this because despite being a delinquent state, I think it's important for you all to know that Falls Church is doing everything we can within the power that we're given by Richmond to do our part. So I think that's important for you all to be aware of. And also just for kids, because it's pretty popular out there, note that we actually have an ordinance around pneumatic guns. So we actually ban the use of pneumatic guns, which means air guns, paintball guns, BB guns. We ban the use of them by anyone under the age of 16, and you can only use them on private property with supervision if you're above 16. And there's a nice PSA that I think Officer Rao had done that's out on social media. It's really good tips on just public safety, just be aware of kind of how to use, discharge them safely. So just wanted to make sure the community is aware of them, but especially the kids out there. Thank you for paying attention to this, and know that your city council is trying to do our part, too.
All right, thank you very much, and thank you for your efforts. Anyone else on council have any comments, or should we move to a motion? Mr. Z?
Thank you, Mayor. I know we in this city are doing everything we can and even suggesting things that would push the envelope up more than some people are comfortable with. We had introduced and supported a ordinance to ban weapons in the library, and of course that failed. It looks like this session in Richmond, the three common sense things that we should be doing, will fail as well. The red flag, which is to say if you're under injunction or some other legal restraint, that law enforcement take a hard look at whether you should be permitted to acquire or retain your firearms, and that's going to go down. The universal background check that closed the loop on private sales and other kinds of transactions will also likely fail. And then the call for a national database interoperability, which is to say that if there was someone visiting from another state whose presence would raise these flags, that's not going to make it either, it doesn't look like. Although, the good news is Virginia is finally updating its own internal database, and that effort should take some pure time. And I'm wondering whether, in fact, Chief, that we, you don't have to answer this, I'm sure you're working on this, if there's anything that we can do to ensure that our part in filling in the gaps is done, that we go beyond the required measure and input the data that we have, and to work with our surrounding jurisdictions to ensure that at least those things that we can do are done. The issue of pneumatic weapons is bothersome because, as we know, the ability to simulate a real weapon in size and look and character and feel and finish is very prevalent, and none of us would like to think of any of our children, for lack of a better word, common sense, running down the bike path carrying an aerosol handgun of some kind and meet with the tragic end. So we need to be obviously mindful of that as a community, but, so it's not all bad news. You know, this is a gubernatorial year. There are many representatives and senators up for election this fall. So I would urge all of us here on council and those watching from home that we pay particular attention to this issue and for the positions of those running for public office, and vote accordingly. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Does anyone else have any comment, or should we move to a motion?
I move to adopt TO 18-12.
Do we have a second? We have a second? Madam Clerk?
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Charter?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Thank you, Council.
Thank you. Thank you all for your support. All right, more work to do, though, but, all right, let's move on to the next item. Madam Clerk?
Yes, this is also a second reading and public hearing for TO 19-01, Ordinance to amend ordinance 1990 regarding the budget of expenditures and revenues appropriating funds for fiscal year 2019 for the General Fund and the Capital Improvements Program Funds.
All right, Ms. Powell, welcome.
Evening, Mayor Charter and members of the council. This is a second hearing of the second budget appropriation changes for this fiscal year 2019, recognizes various grants that we have received, use of some fund balance for specific projects in three funds, General Fund, Capital Improvement Fund, and Special Transportation Fund. I would like to call out just a couple of projects for everybody's notification with the underscore mark that there are no changes to this since the first reading or the discussion at the work session earlier this month. 350,000 appropriation requests for Big Chimney Improvements Project to be funded by a mix of two funding sources, sale of property and interest income from bonds, and 211,000 for a grant received for Metro Route 3 extension and service expansion, 146,000 roughly for a grant received from Transform 66 for bike share maintenance. And additionally, we have a request of 700,000 increase to appropriation for the land acquisition projects for the Fellows' property located on Parker Avenue and South Oak Streets. And Fellows', with that, I'll conclude my report and open for any questions you may have.
All right, are there any questions? Ms. Hardy?
So I know it's second reading, and all these things we've talked about before, but I know in light of the newest budget pressures we're facing with the bill from Arlington, plus maybe extra money, extra, I guess, bills from Metro with the shutdown, do we think that any of these new appropriations would be better spent on actually offsetting those new costs?
At this point, I would like to point out that the funds that we are requesting for appropriation now are one-time funds, and any funding that would go for Womata operations or even the bill for increased contracts is operating, and for that we would, to be in compliance with our policy, we should use ongoing funds, operating funds instead of one-time funds. So this is appropriate use of the funds at this time.
Mr. Duncan?
Could I just ask a quick question about the Fellows' property? So the $700,000 that we're appropriating with this step, where does that take us now legally? I mean, when does the balloon drop on we own the Fellows' property?
We are working toward ironing out all the final details for closing, and this will get us to the final amount. It's just a matter of sorting through a few more things, details related to the Fellows' trust, to make sure that we can go ahead and do the transfer and have it be cleaned. We will not do an actual closing, we'll do it by order of title. So we will, when we've got everything arranged, we will take it to court, and the court will enter an order transferring the title to the property to the city.
So that's a ministerial action? We don't, after tonight, we don't have to do anything further here on council?
I believe that when we have the final arrangements all made, we will bring the agreement of sale for the price to you for final approval. That'll be the one document you'll have to approve.
Thank you. All right, are there any other? Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Yep. So Ms. Powell, thanks for putting this together. I voted no on first reading, and I just want you to know, it's not because of your hard work. I agree with the vast majority of this, but I've consistently been against the pursuit of the Fellows' property for a number of reasons related to process. So I do want that to be on the record, that I will be voting no tonight, but it is almost exclusively related to the Fellows' property. I will remain consistent in my voting on this. So thank you for your work.
Thank you.
All right, are there other comments? I would just note, I wouldn't call it a cautionary tale, but I would note that before us tonight are two capital projects, if you will, and both of them cost, are costing more than we originally planned and originally budgeted. The park is maybe 30 or so percent more, I think, than originally proposed, and the property itself is, I don't know how much more, but I think more than a million dollars more than originally contemplated. And so I think just going forward, we need to keep in mind that cost overruns and things, for whatever reason, ended up being more expensive than we originally thought, or something that probably is going to continue in the future, and we need to keep that in mind as we plan and budget for the future. So just a thought for what it's worth. Do we have a motion with regards to this item? Mr. Duncan?
Vice Mayor, I move to adopt TO 19-01.
Second.
All right, did I call for public comment yet? Does anyone recall? Is there any member of the public who wishes to speak to this matter? Seeing none, the matter is closed to the public. Madam Clerk, will you call to vote here?
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lichtenhouse?
No.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Charter?
Yes.
Motion carries five to one. Thank you, Council.
Thank you. All right, let's move on to the next item. We have consent items. Is there any item that any member of council would like to remove from consent? All right, if not, Mr. Shields?
The items on consent include the list of appointments that are shown on the, on the agenda for the meeting, and then the other item is authorization for the city manager on behalf of the city to sign agreements with Arthur Construction, Finley Asphalt and Ceiling, and Espina Paving for paving, and with Arthur Construction and Finley Asphalt and Ceiling for full-depth reclamation, and contract amounts up to $400,000 each per fiscal year, and to renew the contracts annually for four additional one-year terms subject to annual appropriation of funds. These are the contractors that we typically do our annual paving with, and these contract amounts were competitively bid through regional cooperative procurement, and so we believe we're getting the best value for the, for the city's taxpayers on these contracts.
All right.
Those are the items on the consent.
Mr. Duncan, and then Ms. Hardy?
Could I just ask a question about, is that number three? Are those specific project-related, or are there roads we intend to pave with the money that we're authorizing here, or?
This is really to bring them under contract, and we have an annual paving program that is based on a condition report. So this isn't specific, this isn't approving for specific projects, this would be our regular on-call paving contract.
So the decision about what specific projects we undertake is, again, something that you all decide and let us know about, but it's not something that we specifically vote on, is that right?
That is true. For paving, that is typically an administrative process that does not come to council. Special projects do, however. Whether there are spot improvements that the council wants to see get done due to input that you've received, these are the contractors that do that work.
Is the Railroad Avenue project one of those that's on your radar screen for the coming?
It is. So that's been appropriated in prior years by councils, that money's already appropriated, and there's a proffer of $50,000 by the developer that will help offset those costs. It's really, it's a cost share, and that's a full-depth reclamation project for Railroad Avenue as well.
And that'll be undertaken as soon as the paving season starts?
Yeah, our initial plan was to do that in the fall. However, the construction of the cottages was not ready for that. We did not want to have a brand-new street while they're still doing heavy construction on the street, so now it will need to wait for paving weather.
Okay, thanks. All right, Ms. Hardy?
I had a similar question about paving. Does the contract have room in it for the paving work we've talked about in the downtown, so the parking lots needing paving and striping, or striping in separate contract?
Yes, the contracts are large enough to accommodate that.
And so it will be a separate discussion, talk about priority of that versus...
That's right.
All right, well, I don't know whether these are all consents or not, but why don't we pretend that they are?
I think it was a discussion about paving in general and not specifically. Is that correct?
All right, so do we have a motion? Is there any public comment about the consent items? Seeing none, the matter is closed to the public. Do we have a motion?
Mayor move to approve the items on the consent agenda.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk?
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
And Mayor Charter?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, is there any business not on the agenda? Any standing regional committee, council liaison reports? All right.
The economic development committee meeting is this Thursday at 9:00.
All right, Ms. Hardy?
There's several of us that would like to see the exotic animal ordinance scheduled in the month of February, so I don't see a schedule posted here, but I wanted to know from the city manager if that was possible.
If I could get back with the council just on staff availability for that, and we understand the council request for that, and so if I could get back with you on that, but message received.
We're happy to work offline if we need to on the draft of that, too. Thank you.
All right, what do we, what else? Anything else?
I wonder if on behalf of Mr. Snyder, who hasn't arrived yet, if I could raise the Womata letter quickly that he requested?
All right, you want to raise it where of your head? Or do you want to...
Raise the topic. At the previous meetings, Councilman Snyder had asked council to consider endorsing public comment on the Womata proposed budget since it's significantly above what the state code and intent had been for a 3% cap. We've been working on a draft with him. Thank you. He has not had a chance to review this draft, but I wanted to seek council's concurrence to authorize the mayor to sign this letter pending Councilman Snyder's final review. The timing is time-sensitive because while the public comment period is open to February 5th, this is the last council meeting for action, and Councilman Snyder will be speaking at the Womata public hearing tomorrow and would enter this into testimony. What we've done in the letter in the first paragraph is acknowledge the improvements to safety, state of good repair, and this budget does actually start moving ridership in innovative ways in the right direction, and so staff supports that. We are looking at the budget closely and the impact on the city, so you can see my handwritten notes where we have some items that we need to confirm. But to Mr. Snyder's point, he's been very concerned that the budget for the City of Falls Church in one of the models would go up to 11.8% increase, certainly not 3%. And so want to enforce that they need to stay focused on the important things, but within the commitment to the budget. As I mentioned, this is just staff language. There may be some additional comments that Councilman Snyder would recommend. But with that, I'd open to questions, but also seek council's concurrence that the mayor could sign this letter so we can proceed with getting your comments on the record.
All right, thank you very much for your good work. Are there any comments from council? Are there any comments from council?
I concur.
All right, anyone else have any comments or anything to say? Okay, well, I'm not sure.
Thank you, Council. By, by tomorrow morning, we'll be working for signature and you can authorize electronic if that's satisfactory.
Sounds good. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you. Okay, are there any council member comments that haven't been made? Any approval of minutes? Doesn't look like there's any minutes to be approved. Anything else we should be discussing tonight? All right, if not, uh, there is a closed session that is proposed this evening. Before we get to that vote, I just would like to make a brief, uh, comment. Subsequent to the execution of the interim agreement, the private development team has requested modifications to certain terms of the agreement. City council has been considering these modifications over the past several weeks. No changes have been agreed to and these discussions are ongoing. We continue to seek to promote the best interests of the city. With that, I do have a motion for a closed session, um, that I'm gonna read and see if council is agreeable. Upon a motion made by council member?
Conley.
And seconded by council member?
Hardy.
And passed by a vote of city council, council went in a closed session pursuant to Virginia Code Section two point two dash three seven one one eight twenty-nine, discussion of the award of a public contract and the terms or scope of such contract where discussion in open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the city, specifically terms of contracts for the campus project. Councilmember Conley?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan?
Yes.
Councilmember Hardy?
Yes.
Councilmember Lichtenhouse?
Yes.
Councilmember Snyder is absent. Councilmember Z?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
All right, it is eight twenty-three and let's take a short break so we can get the mics down.
And, and Mayor, if I could just maybe note for the record, um, councilmember Snyder is in Richmond on, uh, working with the General Assembly on transportation funding issues. He is heading back and I think it is, uh, possible that he will actually join the closed session, uh, later on.
Great, thank you very much. All right, all right, everyone, let's go ahead and, uh, finish up tonight if we could and come out of closed session, do our certification and head on home. Uh, upon a motion made by council member?
Hardy. Conley.
I'm gonna go with Hardy. And seconded by council member?
Conley.
Conley. And passed by a vote of city council, council reconvened in open session. Councilmember Conley?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Lichtenhouse?
Yeah.
Snyder?
Yeah.
Z?
Yes.
Carter?
Yep.
All right, so it is eleven twenty-seven and this is a certification. Upon a motion made by council member?
Duncan.
And seconded by council member?
Z.
And passed by affirmative roll call vote in open session, it was certified that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements and only such public business matters that were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting